Welcome to the Spiritual Revival Hour. This is the founding program here on least access TV now, Channel 28, created by Dr. Benjamin Twin B. Brown. We represent words and songs of inspiration, consolation, meditation, and education. I am Victoria Cardion, 12 years old, the youngest co-host on our production team. And we're going to begin our presentation today with a special dedication to our senior citizens, sick, shut-ins, along with the less fortunate.
Welcome to another edition of your Spiritual Revival Hour. We have a special program for you today. We have an election coming up, school board election coming up. And we have two young ladies here with us today who's going to try to encourage you to get out and vote. The program is a special from the ACLU. And they have invited another guest from the Metropolitan Urban League is with us. So I want you to just tell us who you are and you can introduce who you are, the guests.
Yeah, awesome. I am Helen. I am one of the campaign managers at the ACLU of Delaware. I oversee our voting rights campaigns as well as a couple of our other issue areas. And have been working on school board elections for the past little bit. I'm so happy to be here with my colleague Cheyenne at Urban League. And yeah, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Cheyenne Miller. I work at the Metropolitan Women's and Urban League. And I'm the Building People Power Campaign Manager. And we do a lot of policy advocacy around issues like housing, education, criminal justice, healthcare, environmental issues, anything that touches people of color that focuses on racial justice, we are working in that space. And we love partnering with the ACLU on almost every one of those issues.
Oh, we love getting to work with our partners.
Yep, we work all the time. We're always in each other's faces.
See you more than my family, I think.
Why you think it's so important now for you all to come together to encourage people to get out and vote?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. You know, school boards do so much for our local schools, our local communities. You know, when we often think about, you know, who impacts, you know, students' education, you know, you'll think parents, you'll think teachers, principals. But I think school boards don't always get the amount of attention that they deserve. But they oversee the budgets of their districts and can range into the millions. They make all sorts of educational policies and other policies. And so they shape, you know, the education that every single student across their district receives. And we, the public, you know, get a chance to say, you know, who should be on that board? Who should be making those decisions? And so it's so vitally important that, you know, people know about these elections and they get out and vote.
What you're really saying is it's more to be on the school board, right?
Yeah, it makes and breaks, you know, the education students get, our kids in our communities get. And when our schools are healthy, our communities are healthy and everyone is sort of lifted up if our schools are doing well. And so that's why it's so important that the role the school board plays in that. And that's why it's so important that we know these elections are happening this year on May 9th and that people are, you know, educated about who's running in their district and are ready to go out there and to make that decision for their community.
Who is qualified to vote in this election coming up?
Yeah, so to be able to vote, you have to be over 18. You have to be a U.S. citizen and a citizen of Delaware. And you have to live in the school district that you're voting for. But you don't have to be registered to vote. And people with felonies and other sorts of things like that are able to vote in school board elections. And so it's a great opportunity for some people who maybe don't get to vote in the primary or general or other sorts of elections. It's a great way to get to use your voice in these local elections.
Now, how did you all start working together? How long you've been working together?
Yeah, so you know, ACLU and Urban League have been working together for several years now. And a lot of our work, especially for me, I came in around 2019 at the Urban League. So I don't remember a time not working with the ACLU actually since 2019 and frankly, before that, before I even came with the Urban League. So definitely for four or five years now, we've been working together. And a lot of our work has focused on, as it relates to the school board, it's really around get out the vote and educating voters. So the thing is, like you just said, everybody can vote pretty much, not everybody, but most people can vote. If you're over the age 18 and you're living in the school district, it's very likely that you're able to go to the school and vote on May 9th. May 9th?
Mm-hmm, May 9th.
What day?
May 9th, that's a Tuesday.
So we know Tuesday, May 9th, because it's like, you know, like three or four days from now. So anybody can vote. And so when we're talking about how we partner, our biggest thing is voter education, voter turnout. You can't show up if you don't know where to go. You can't show up if you don't know when. And frankly, you don't want to show up and not know who to vote for. And so one of the things I really like about working with ACLU is that they help to spread information about who's running and what are they standing for, you know? And that's what's most important is knowing who's running, who are your options for the district that you're voting in. And for Newcastle County, you know, we're Red Clay, Christina and...
Apo has a race.
Right, so like we need to know, right? Like who's running and what they stand for. And so like one of the things I'm happy about with partnering is knowing where to show up, knowing who's running and knowing what your options are when it's time for you to go and vote and cast your ballot.
Yeah, absolutely. I know that we have partnered on many things before school boards as we're really getting into school board elections, particularly this year. And so it's been great to bring in other partners to come alongside us in this work. And yeah, be able to sort of create those informations. One of the best resources, you know, that are out there for voters here in Delaware is a website that we helped put together. It's votedellaware.org. You have to spell out the word Delaware. And that is sort of your one-stop shop for all things school board elections. It's going to cover the sort of get out the voter information, you know, where are my polling places? Because they are different for school board elections than where you normally go to vote in like a general election. Will help you find all the polling places in your district and you can vote at any of them. It'll walk you through, you know, what sort of IDs do you need to bring with you? Do you need to have on hand? As well as, you know, help talk a little bit about voter accessibility so that, you know, you make sure that you know like what your precinct or your polling place should have and that they're ready for you so that our polling places are accessible. It also breaks down, you know, key issues, everything from, you know, making sure that there's budget equity to having policies of restorative discipline used in schools instead of, you know, overpolicing our hallways. It breaks down, you know, we sent a questionnaire out to all the candidates so lets you be able to compare those who chose to respond.
That's my favorite.
And see, you know, where maybe they have some similar ideas and where they have maybe very different ideas. And so votedellaware.org, you know, it kind of takes all of these places and kind of lets you get a really good view of like what's going on in your district. Where do you need to then go to actually vote so that, you know, once we've given you the voter information, when you step up to cast your vote, you know, you are an informed voter, you're an educated voter, you've thought about, you know, what's best for you, what's best for your community, and you are ready to cast that vote.
And what do you have anything specific that you want to say to the people?
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, we're not allowed to endorse candidates over at the Urban League or anything like that. So what we tend to talk about is what's best for the kids, right? We have about almost 150,000 public education students in the state, right? And school board elections are one of the very few opportunities people have to participate in deciding what happens when it comes to public education in Delaware. So when we're talking about going to school board elections, our biggest thing is, are you asking the right questions of whatever candidates are running in your school board elections? Are you asking them about academics? Because we have a lot of people who are, I should say, students who are struggling in schools academically, you know, schools that are underperforming and students that are leaving school, leaving their grade level, not reading on grade level, not doing math on grade level, having less opportunity to STEM. So that's like, you know, science, technology, engineering, math, schools that don't have access to any type of arts education. I'm talking about anything under arts, music, anything. And then students who don't have access to extracurriculars. We have lots of issues in Delaware when it comes to the school to prison pipeline. And people don't know that school boards have a huge impact on the school to prison pipeline and decisions are made at the school board level. Who you vote for will ultimately have an impact on whether or not your school has a disproportionate number of black kids, kids that have disabilities that are going into the school to prison pipeline. So our questions for us, when we talk about school board elections, we're really asking the question of, you know, what are you going to do for kids of color, right? What are you going to do for kids who are experiencing poverty? What are you going to do for kids that are suffering from any type of disability? And how are you as a school board candidate and eventually possibly a school board member? How are you going to make sure that you're serving those kids and that you're addressing the big needs in our community? So one of the things we really like is we like knowing who's running, we like to know what they stand for. And because it's so political now, it's so crazy with these school board elections, it's important that now voters are asking those questions. They got to be informed about what to be asking when they walk into the ballot.
So what you all, both of you all are saying, the importance of who are on the school board makes a difference of what the kids are taught and how kids...
Yes, yes. Huge difference.
Absolutely. From, you know, how well they're doing in math and things like that. But also like you were saying with like overpolicing, you know, our school ways in that school to prison pipeline, you know, instead of penalizing children for acting out for, you know, things like that and kind of further, you know, adding harm to the student, you know, really instead of having school boards take policies that, you know, address those root causes, whether it's poverty or other issues going on at home or other help needed or a disability or something and sort of helping with that root cause to sort of address the bigger problem instead of punishing, you know, a kid from for something that's going on outside of their control. And so, you know, school boards, they impact the actual learning you do, the academics, but also helping shape kids emotionally and mentally. And so it's so important that people, you know, go out, make sure that, you know, you're ready on May 9th, you have between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. to go cast that vote. Because, you know, every kid, every person in your community is going to be better for you getting out there and voting.
And I'll say this, you know, one of the things that I remember in the last three or four years, this is before the pandemic, I even want to say, or even during, one of the issues that came up on the Red Clay School Board was the question of whether we could start to reallocate funds from some of the school resource officers who were being hired to be able to establish some school psychologists, school nurses that would kind of get at, rather than having a school resource officer in the schools, more at, hey, are we looking at people's mental health and addressing some either behavioral issues or anything like that from the source? There was a decision that Red Clay School Board members had to make about whether they wanted to reallocate that money so that they could hire a school psychologist and stuff. And the decision turned out that they didn't, they didn't, they didn't change that money around, right? They didn't move that money. They didn't decide to say, hey, instead of funding cops in schools, we're going to fund school psychologists, school nurse. This is a big deal. And they make these decisions every year. And every year, we say the same thing over and over, go vote in your school board elections. So when these issues come up, you know, you want to be able to say that you were involved from the beginning on May 9th, when you go vote, right? All the way up until every month when they go and they meet and they start talking about some of these issues. So they have a lot of power. They got power over money, they got power over curriculum. They have more power than people think. It may not be the most powerful, but they got power in Delaware schools.
Well, if you could wrap it up, you want to tell us when is this election going to happen?
Yeah, absolutely. So the election is coming up in just a couple of days. It is Tuesday, May 9th. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Again, you can go to votedellaware.org. It will help you find your polling place. You can vote at any of the polling places in your district. And again, you don't need to be registered to vote. Delaware tends to have pretty dismal voter turnout, low single digits. And so get out there and vote. Your community needs it and you're going to be doing such a great thing for all the kids in your district.
Now, if somebody wants further information, is there a number that they can call?
So there, I don't have a phone number that you can call, but I would go to votedellaware.org should help you with any most school board related questions. But you can always reach out if you go to the ACLU Delaware, our main website, you'll definitely be able to get a contact information for someone there.
Yep, and yeah, you know, for us, if you go to mwl.org, that's Metropolitan Women's and Urban League, the letter, first letter of each word, it's a lot of words, mwl.org, you'll be able to see anything up there on what's going on in some of the Delaware schools as well as contact us if you want to be able to find more information about how to get involved with this stuff long-term. Because voting is the first step. Next step is going to school board meeting. May 9th, y'all.
You've just witnessed a special get out the vote by the ACLU. And they have invited along with them the Urban League. We hope that you have gotten some information and you will get out on May 9th and vote. This has been a special edition of your Spiritual Revival Hour, words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education.
As we move closer to voting season, let us remind you all that this is an important election which will affect the lives of minorities for years to come. So it is imperative that if you are of age and qualified to vote, you must do so and encourage others to do the same. The only thing that you have equal to the president is your vote. And remember that when you vote, vote for the person and not the party. For further information, call 302-287-4413.
We know it's cold, but we're on fire. This tax season, nobody beats Brandywine. Nobody. It's an all-out price war. You haven't seen prices in furniture, mattresses, rugs, accessories, anywhere, nor will you anywhere. We'd love you to shop around because this tax season, nobody beats Brandywine Furniture.
You don't hear me say this too often, but let me tell you, this is a day that the Lord has made.
Yeah.
How about that? I am, for those of you from another state, I'm Mike Przycki, I'm the mayor of the city. And I am just delighted, delighted to be here. We met how long ago? Six, eight weeks ago, down at the Chase Center honoring this magnificent woman who graces my lapel here. And I remember going there just blown away by the number of people who were in the Chase Center. There are 1,500 people down there. I know something in this life, 1,500 people aren't going to show up for me. And I'm the mayor. I mean, it's like she was, she was a remarkable, remarkable woman who deserves, who deserved that great send-off, who deserved all the accolades accorded her that day. What I remember most, I remember a number of things about that day. I remember getting up and speaking my heart for five minutes and three seconds because I was reminded that I went over the three-minute. And only, only my two colleagues here, Bishop Weeks and Bishop Gibson, past apostle Weeks, they know why. They know why I wanted to steal that extra two minutes. But I remember it was an easy, it was an easy event to talk about because all I did was just open up my heart and talk about this wonderful woman who, who made such an impression on our city over such a long period of time. And then I remember, for those of you who didn't attend it, I remember someone, Donnie, gave me a copy of her certificate to preach. And it was so moving because it was a document we had somewhere in our archives for, since 1959. I guess you need a doc, you need a permit to preach in this city. And so we had her permit. And what was amazing about it, what was so amazing about it is the form that they used only had room for men. It was just he, his, her. And I remember they had this he, his, her, and they had to cross out he and put, or add an S and make she and then, and it was just touching because it reminded you what a pioneer, what a pioneer Bishop Morton was. That, yeah. It reminded you that there were doors closed and some people, when they came up to those doors, turned around and walked away. And Bishop Morton just pushed right through those closed doors. And what she meant to this community over so much time was extraordinary. So I remember, I remember when we spoke that night, I said to the, I said to the crowd, look, the seminal moment in that life wasn't just the day she was born, it was the day that she was ordained. And that's the day, that's the day we ought to memorialize in Wilmington. And so I promised that day that we would make April 24th Bishop Alitha Morton Day in Wilmington. And here we are. I mean, really, I got to tell you, I got to thank her, thank her for making me feel so good as a human being for being a part of this. That's what a wonderful day today is. And so we're going to, we're going to get to do this in a little while, but I just want, Donald, you behind me here? Yeah, I mean, Donald and I have been friends and it's so moving for me to be a part of this celebration of his mother because there are things you start to understand in this life at my advanced age. And one is you only get one, you only get one mother. And there is nothing, you know, being a dad, I can tell you, there's a wonderful, there's a wonderful cartoon, there's a wonderful cartoon they did years ago, and I can't remember who it was, but they, they had this thing where the dad goes to his kids and says, look, there's a possibility your mother and I may be separating and I want to know which, which... And they said, Mom. You know, I mean, like he didn't get it out. And that's the way it is, as much as my kids love me, I know where they're going. And so I'm just so moved, I'm moved here to be mayor of a city that loved a person and that love reflects our value as a, as a city. And I'm just so, so proud. So we're going to get to the formal ceremony in a little while, but we have a number of people who want to get up and pay their respects. And first, I want to introduce Brigida Fields in whose district the church resides. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is a pleasure to be a part of. I grew up in Western City where Tabernacle is. And just to be here today is a great honor and pleasure. And I thank God for all of you being here just to honor a great woman, not just throughout the city of Wilmington and the state of Delaware, but from Western City. It's an honor for me to speak on such a monumental day as today. A woman of many firsts, Bishop Aretha Morton was a trailblazer and a hero for many people in the state of Delaware. Bishop Morton is a pillar of the community and her church. Tabernacle Full Gospel Baptist Church is a historic staple in the 5th District. Her presence in the church was a game changer for all women in the state of Delaware. Her position disrupted the male-controlled patterns that says women bodies don't belong behind pulpits. Bishop Morton gave young girls a fuller vision of what God can call them to. And her life is a testimony of showing young girls that they don't have to wait so long to see the possibilities of what they can be in church life. With a great heart and compassion, Bishop Morton proudly led people in the church and beyond. Today's day will not only bring recognition to Bishop Morton's legacy, but it will also give an opportunity for those who did not get a chance to know her, to learn more about her within our schools, businesses, and communities. She will be missed, but moving forward, her legacy will never be forgotten.
Hey, y'all. As Bishop, as Bishop would say, first and foremost, I want to thank you, Mayor Przycki, and as Bishop would so respectfully call you Mr. Mayor. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you so very much for this day. Today, we are indeed celebrating a historic day whereby in 1959, Bishop Morton preached her what they called then initial and/or trial sermon. And here we are, 64 years later, a day well-deserved. And it's so fitting, whoa, I didn't do that. It's so fitting that we are doing this at the backdrop of Peter Spence... It's so fitting that we are doing this at the backdrop of Peter Spencer Plaza. Peter Spencer, as you all know, was an American freedman who in 1813 founded the Union Church of Africans in Wilmington, Delaware. And it's so ironic that known today, Mother AUMCP Church. That actually was the last preaching assignment that Bishop had in September, 18, 19, I'm sorry, 2022, as they were celebrating that church's 209th year anniversary. Yeah, yeah. In Bishop's words, if she were here, Bishop would lean over and she would say, I'm having a humility attack. Because that's just who she was, humble to a fault. Looking out and seeing all of you is just so amazing. And I can imagine that if Bishop were here in the flesh, and I say in the flesh because she is definitely here in spirit with each and every one of us. If she were here, she would say, I love you guys. And then she'd probably say something funny. Because with all the gifts that Bishop had, comedian was one right at the top of the list. And Bishop wasn't just funny, she was laugh-out-loud funny. And she will certainly be missed for that. In closing, I want to take time to personally thank my manager, my friend, my sister friend, Ms. Donnie Bouchelle Smith. Donnie didn't know Bishop to know her, but she jumped right in. And, and those of you that were able to see the program and read that extensive program, that bio, that was Ms. Smith with her prolific writing skills, taking some 20-some biographies that I had written for Bishop over the years. And she just condensed it and created a masterpiece. And we so thank her because that will be Bishop's last official written document. So thank you so very much for that. And then also I want to thank each and every one of you for your kind acts of sympathy, expressions of sympathy, all the prayers, all the contributions, the participations, the kind and in-kind acts of service these past few months since February the 4th, 2023 to this very moment. Believe me when I say, we could not have done it without you. So from my heart to Bishop's family, to our church family throughout the state and this nation, and definitely this beloved city of Wilmington, I want you all to know that it has been my greatest honor to have served her for 37 years. I want to acknowledge Bishop Kim Davis, who was the successor for the state of Delaware Full Gospel Baptist Church Fellowship for Bishop Morton. And also Reverend Dr. Mark Rainey, who is the successor for Tabernacle Full Gospel Baptist Cathedral. And as Bishop, we're just gonna continue to allow her legacy to never die. And right now, I just sense the spirit of Bishop saying to each and every one of you in Bishop's own signature way, if you would turn to somebody and with a smile, just say, hey, baby.
Myself and the Reverend Bishop Aretha Morton had been traveling the cities for over 40 years. We were in a lot of meetings, a lot of crisis meetings. And I learned that we both shared a love, and that was for young people. She was very vocal with hers. So I didn't have, I could sit back and I could know that she was going to take the lead and just go for it for both male, female, just our young people. She did it behind closed doors as well as out front. She committed her life, her ministry to that. She was also very much a part of when we had two ministerial organizations in our city. She was very much a part of them coming together, coming together, coming together. And in our coming together, I remember one of the, the areas that she was making sure that as we developed the new name, that we had action. She just didn't want us to be a ministerial body. She wanted us to be the Action Council. We get stuff done. Now, in that spirit, in that spirit, I'm picking up on today. And I would like to propose to the mayor, to the city council, that we do more than just have a day. That this day become a rallying day for us to be able to raise funds and to give funds to a school that has been named Aretha Morton. And in that school, in that school, there is this pool of extra funds coming in that's going to make sure that there are some young leaders, especially female leaders, that are being developed in a very special way in that school. And because I am usually the one sitting in a position like the mayor, having folks give suggestions without putting any skin in the game, I want the mayor to know that New Destiny Fellowship will be the first to give $1,000 towards that fund in that school that's named after Bishop Aretha Morton.
Hey, y'all. I said, hey, y'all. I can't quite bring my, don't, don't do the hey, baby thing. Apostle turned to me and said, hey, baby. I was like, nah, I can't, yeah, I can't do that. Before I begin, let me just kind of confess something to you. I had 53 years with my mom. And sometimes when you're that close to greatness, you take it for granted. My mom, somebody called her recently a little big deal. Small in stature, but very strong in impact. I want to tell you a story. My niester got me from the airport on Saturday. And so as soon as I get in the truck, she says, Bronk, we gonna hang a door soon as we get to the house. I said, no, we not gonna hang a door. If you want to hang a door, you can hang a door. She said, no, we, we can, we can, we can do this. So all throughout the day, she's signifying to me how important it is that we hang this door. The mayor said earlier that mom opened many doors for a whole lot of people. Primarily our sisters of our community. Can y'all give God praise for the fact that she would spend her life? So in the way that I do, I go, I go on Facebook. I'm ready to clown. Because my niester wants to hang a door, I'm sitting on the couch, neighbors are watching, everybody's smiling and clowning. Like, y'all good? They see a grown man with a camera and three women trying to hang a door. And it hit me, Wayne, it hit me at the moment that I went outside to clown. This is exactly what Aretha Morton would do. Not gonna call nobody to do something she knows how to do for herself. When she was married to my father, she would always complain that dad would sit down, watch Monday Night Football, whatever day the football games came on while she was carrying, in her words, 50 pound, 50 pound bags of coal across America. Y'all know she had some stories, right? Can I, can I just suggest something to you? My mom didn't just open doors. She hung them first. It's one thing to be able to open doors so that people can pass through. It's another, it's another thing to hang the door that the very people are able to walk through. I'm excited for a woman that I now respect in ways that are unimaginable. Not because I didn't respect her before, Congressman, I did, or Senator, I did. It's not that I didn't respect her before, but when you're that close, when, when you get a chance to go over and eat spaghetti with the spaghetti that she made, or the chicken and rice that she made. See, y'all got a chance to see Bishop Aretha Morton, I got a chance to see mom. But I gotta give her flowers. The woman changed lives. I'm gonna tell you a last story, Bishop Davis. Every, every Baptist preacher got three closings, this is my last one. When I, what, what many don't know, Elder Ray knows, is that mom didn't just want April 24th to be celebrated by mom. My anniversary is April 24th. Bishop or, or Elder Nancy Fitzpatrick's anniversary is April 24th. So we're able to share in this day. When I first got into ministry, my, one of my first assignments Apostle Weeks was she took me to a funeral at Harriet Tubman Church on Market. And when we're walking in, Elder Ray, I'm sure you already know this, we're walking in, they fighting inside the funeral. Come on, don't act like y'all don't know, that's what we do sometimes, right? It ain't a funeral till somebody fight. So, so they're fighting in the funeral, everybody's, everybody's running out saying they fighting. So I'm going the way the crowd's going. Everybody's leaving, I'm leaving too. She said, oh, no. I said, what we doing, we out? She said, oh, no. Ministry is not Sunday morning. Ministry is walking in this place and comforting a family that everybody is now abandoning because it's a little chaos. Not only did she walk into chaos, she had every comfort in creating chaos. I remember one time she told me, she said, baby, now President Biden, when he was Senator Biden, he called a meeting and she said, no, you don't call meetings, we call meetings. And so she asked everybody to leave so that when Senator Biden showed up, nobody was there. Because she didn't just go into chaos, she created chaos. She didn't just open doors, she hung doors.
Hi, my name is Dr. Sharon L. Burton. I am elated to write the legacy of Dr. Twin B. Brown. This leader introduced internet cable to Wilmington, Delaware and Newcastle County. He is a founding member of the Ministers' Action Council, otherwise known as IMAC. And he conducted hands-on video workshops for youth as well as adults. Through writing this legendary leader's truth and legacy, I have the opportunity to shed light on Dr. Brown's life and accomplishments, including his impact on the community and the field in which he works. The text was shared in account of his life, professional achievements, including his contributions to the community. Overall, this book has the potential to be an incredible resource for those interested in Wilmington, Delaware's history and anyone seeking to learn from such a remarkable individual like Dr. Twin B. Brown.
I'm Shanae Darby inviting you to consider what better way to celebrate Black History Month than to support a legend of over 50-plus years of dedicated, committed services to the community. Dr. Benjamin Twin B. Brown and Community Communications Corporation introduced internet cable to Wilmington and Newcastle County. It is also the creator of leased-assess TV programming you now enjoy here on Channel 28. It is the godfather of the annual Thanksgiving Christmas dinner in Turkey, giveaways to the community for over 40 years. One of the founding members of the Ministers' Action Councils, known as IMAC, conducted the largest successful voter education and registration drive ever in our county. For over 42 years, conducted studio and onsite hands-on video workshops for youth and adults. Created the longest airing local cable TV programming and many more broadcasting entities. He is still active and productive to this day. Oh, what a legacy. If you would like to support Dr. Benjamin Twin B. Brown and Community Communications Corporation, contact us at 302-287-4413. If your call is not answered, please leave a clear message carefully stating your name, an email address, and detailing information will be emailed to you promptly.
Thanks for staying with us and we're going to continue with getting out the vote. There's a special election coming up on Tuesday, May 9th. And we have with us one co-host. And if you've been with us for the past couple of weeks, then we have a new co-host, Brother Don Patton. Thanks for being back with us, Don. We're gonna talk about voting on May 9th. And I know you have lots to say about that, how important it is. We had the ACLU on with Urban League a little earlier. So what do you have to say about May 9th and how important it is?
So thanks again, Twin, I appreciate being with you. May 9th is crucial and critical to the success of our kids in the city of Wilmington. So let me, let me go a little bit further. School boards, and a lot of people don't understand that school boards are the school boards are the entity that is responsible for the overall education of our kids. And so many elections occur and very few people go out and vote. In the past two years, I think the numbers have increased as relates to getting more people to understand the need to get to the polls and vote. This year, Christina School District specifically has lost, or two individuals decided not to run again. The current president of the board and then the longest board member in terms of years have elected not to run. What that means is, in my opinion, we need to take advantage of May 9 for the Christina School District. We need folks to come out and vote. This is a chance for us to send a message that we're not going to tolerate not educating our kids, especially the kids in the city of Wilmington. A friend of mine yesterday sent me the statistics, the breakdown for our city residents, our city students. And at one school, proficiency in math is 1%. Out of 524 students, only 1% are meeting the goals of proficiency. In ELA, 6%. So I want you to think about that. 524 students and not even 50 of those students are proficient. I think, I believe, part of the responsibility has to lie, not just in the school, but with the school board. Because our goal is and should be student outcomes. We should be measuring, we should be talking about, we should be connected to student outcomes. And we're not if those numbers bear out in the other city school. So right now, I think we were begging parents to get more involved in the voting process as to who sits in the seats. Now, this year is too late for folks to say, "I wanna run for a school board seat." But I hope, because we have these elections every year, I hope that in the future, parents understand the commitment that has to be made and votes for folks who are going to change the dynamics of outcomes that currently exist in our school systems. Now, I'm speaking specifically about the Christina School District, but there's other districts where this also is occurring. And so when we have a seat on the school board, it can change the dynamics. It can make folks accountable, who are not accountable when I hear numbers, like the numbers I just shared with you earlier. So please, on May 9, if you live in the school district, and they have a driver's license, you go to the, and there's a list that you can obtain, I'm sure they'll show it at some point on the show, of the polling locations. But you go to the polling location that's closest to your home or workplace, and you vote. And all you need, you don't need to be registered. If you've had an incident with the law and you have a felony, which normally prevents you from voting, in school board elections, that doesn't matter. You have the opportunity to go out and vote. And when you look at what our children are receiving today, right now, in schools, we need to change that. And your vote on May 9 and moving forward every year when school board elections are run, to making sure that the right people are on the school board who have your child's interests and your interests at heart and will vote and will hold people accountable to make sure that that happens. So May 9, the polls will open at 7:00. I think they close at 8:00. We need you to get out and we need you to vote. And we need you to file that up with coming to board meetings to make sure that the people you vote for, the people who are in office, are doing what they need to do to ensure your child's education.
We just lost one of our great educators in our community, Maurice Bridget. And the Going Home Services is on the 8th of May, Monday, the 8th on tomorrow. And you wanna talk about those services and what he meant to you?
So we started this conversation last week with some people who were intimately close with Maurice at Bancroft. And I can just take a sidestep and say this. The results that we're currently having with our students in terms of performance would have never, would have never happened when Maurice Bridget was the principal of a city school, Bancroft. It would have never happened. It didn't happen. And so Maurice means more to me because of some experiences and connections that go beyond education that I was able to share with him. But here's what I know about Maurice. I know that his goal was to make sure that every single kid in the city of Wilmington was educated, that they had the resources that they needed. They had the clothes, they looked the part of young students, respectful students. Pridge, Mr. Bridget, Maurice, because he was affectionately called all those things by adults and by kids. Was an inspiration, he motivated, he connected with people because they were people. He had this infectious smile. And I shared last week, I remember one time, and it only happened once, that I got mad at him about something. And as soon as he realized that I was mad, he called me. And we were able to have a conversation. And I was able to just laugh at the situation because you could never stay mad. I've never seen Maurice ever mad in my whole life of knowing this man. I don't know how he did it. I can't. I haven't. He was never mad. He would, you could get mad, but he would always share with you in a upbeat, positive response. And so his commitment to education is clear. His dedication to education was clear. And if he were here today, he would be motivating people. He would be encouraging people to go out and to vote. Because he knew the impact of education on all of us. And so I will say a few words about him tomorrow on behalf of the school district. It will be a challenge. And I didn't realize, the more I think about the loss, the more it impacts me. So I'm hoping tomorrow I won't get emotional. But we lost a giant. And his legacy will never be forgotten. And I hope that we continue to find ways to recognize and support that legacy as we move on.
We have lost two great people in our community within the last month, Bishop Aretha E. Morton and Maurice Bridget. Both of them played a big part in my accomplishments. I've done a lot of things. The Lord has blessed me through a lot of things. But behind me was good people like Bishop Morton and Maurice Bridget in the fight to keep programming going here on Channel 28. They worked with me for many, many years. So we invite those of you who know what they have done and appreciate what they have done to join us in the Going Home Service on tomorrow. At Chase Center, at the Chase Center in Wilmington, Delaware on tomorrow, the Going Home Service for Brother Maurice Bridget. This has been another special edition of Your Spiritual Revival Hour, words and songs of inspiration, meditation, consolation, and education.